Trustee Kevin Burnham for County Council on, in May of two thousand and eleven, two thousand and eighteen. We would like to take a roll please.
Trustee Cap?
Here.
Trustee Bonner?
Present.
Trustee Garcia?
Here.
Trustee Greer?
Here.
Trustee Richardson?
Here.
Trustee Claybrook?
Here.
The appointed president for your standing. Let's take a quick look on your seat. Let's review.
Tensler voting for which says, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Now, are there any approval or corrections of the minutes of the regular board meeting from November, I'm sorry, November twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen? Are there any corrections to the minutes? If there are no corrections to the minutes from November twenty-seventh, two thousand and seventeen, I will ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the work. Make a motion to approve the minutes of the work. There's a motion to approve by trustee Claybrook to approve the minutes for November twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen. He is a second.
Second.
He's second by trustee Richardson. We'll try to take a roll please.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed. Before the public speak, if you have anything to say to the board, if people stand up and, uh, and give your name and your reason for addressing the board, then you can add your question. At this time, I will ask for a motion to open the meeting to the public.
I make a motion to open a meeting to the public.
There's a motion to approve by trustee Bonner. We need a second.
Second.
He's second by trustee Claybrook. We'll try to take a roll please.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. The meeting is now open to the public. Is anyone on this side having anything to say? Anyone on this side having anything to say? Is anyone on this side having anything to say? Oh, yeah, yes, sir.
I just got my last water bill and et cetera. It is, uh, it went from eighty-seven dollars to ninety-eight dollars to a hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty-two cents. I can understand an increase and I could live with it. This is ridiculous, ridiculous. You give an estimate? What is the minimum I have to pay? What is it? Nine thousand or what? Nine thousand. And if I don't use nine thousand, I still have to pay for that, right?
Now, if you give us an actual reading, if you give us an actual-
I have been giving the actual reading. And I would like to know, I would like to know how the village of Burnham can, can possibly justify this.
I mean, I'd like to-
If it's been due to your incompetence in the last twenty years, that's not my fault.
I mean, I'd like to clarify that definitely.
Mr. Martin, you came in earlier and-
Yes, I did, and they are gonna come tomorrow.
Correct.
They are gonna come tomorrow.
And we discovered-
But I still would like to know what in God's name is going on here.
We're going to look at the bill again. That's why we sent him out to get an actual reading, because we were off the numbers that you had given us on the yellow card. We just, so once he gets the reading and he makes the appointment with you, we'll go over it. So that bill right now does not stand in question until he reads, um, checks that number-
Hey, I'm more than willing to pay my share of the thing.
And that wasn't the issue.
But this is uncalled for, uncalled for.
But it's being reread.
I mean, that's what she's saying. She's saying that once you get the actual reading, then, I mean, then another-
I gave him the actual reading. I have no reason to lie about it, none whatsoever.
And we want it to be correct, we want it to be fair, we want it to be right, so. You see, your middle chair, I'll help you. Okay, about it? Okay. Are there any other comments from the public? I'll ask for a motion, yes, sir.
Yes, Henry Harris. I got a question about the, uh, water meters as far as their installation. When is that gonna occur, if ever? We already borrowed a million dollars that we never should've done in the first place. I can't see why a village of the hurt for money, why would you go further in debt? And then increase the water bill like the gentleman just stated? Something is not working right.
Well, first of all, let me, uh, correct you. We have not borrowed anything or we have not gotten money. And we have applied for it. The entire process has not been confirmed yet, so there's some pending issues still in there. And once we, uh, I mean, do receive it or everything's gonna prove, then we can move ahead. As of right now, we do not have it.
Okay, so you don't have the million?
No, we don't have it.
Okay. Don't try to get it then, let it stay. You don't need to go further than that, okay?
I got any other comments?
Let it go.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask for a motion to close the meeting to the public.
I make a motion to close the meeting to the public.
A motion to approve by trustee Richardson to close the meeting to the public. We need a second, please.
Second.
He's second by trustee Cap. We'll try to take a roll.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Motion passed. Meeting is now closed to the public. I'd just like to say, um, this morning trustee Claybrook and I have a meeting in Hazelcrest. We deal with street policies. And so he'll give a further update once he gets to his report. As you know, we have, uh, some vacant properties in town, so we are gonna be submitting some of those to the land bank and hoping they can get some resolve on some of those. And it will be no cost to the village, and we'll keep you updated and able to bring you out on that project. And I'd like to say Merry Christmas to everyone and Happy Holidays. And if, um, if you'd like for me to pick up a gift from your house and everything else. All right, clerk News?
Good evening, everyone.
How good evening, evening.
I have a couple of questions. During township property tax appeal, it's being hosted by a county attorney clerk of Miotta State with the county board of, um, review commissioner Larry Rogers. Will present a final forum for two thousand and eighteen tax assessment on Thursday, December twentieth, at six-thirty P.M. at the Sandridge Fitness Center. And you can also appeal your property tax. Second, um, the clerk's office will have holiday hours. Monday, December twenty-fourth, for Christmas Eve, will be open from nine A.M. to twelve P.M. And will be closed on Christmas Day, the twenty-fifth. Monday, December thirty-first, will be open from nine to twelve P.M. and closed for, um, New Year's Day on January first, on Tuesday. That is all I have.
Okay, thank you, clerk, for your report and that information at this time. We will hear trustee Jim. We shall start with the items on the agenda, please.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Discussion of, consideration of, and taking action to approve or not approve on the hiring of Christina Reno as a part-time police officer. She has successfully completed and passed the testing, just the polygraph, the medical, the drug test, the psychological, and the background.
And at this time, before we proceed in a further trustee Greer, we would like for Ms. Reno to stand and give us a little information about her, about her and, uh, and explain to us. I'd like to welcome her.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, um, my name is Christina Reno, and, uh, I have about fifteen years' experience in law enforcement. And I've been working with the city of Chicago at O'Hara's Airport as an officer for six years. I wanna say thank you to everyone for giving me this opportunity to work here in Burnham. Uh, my intention is to continuously serve and protect, as well as also help bridge the gap between police and the community. I just wanna, you know, make a positive impact here for everyone and children and be a role model.
Okay, thank you. Trustee has a question, trustee Greer.
Yes, yes, how are you?
I'm fine.
Yay, okay, yes, I do. Number one, are you easily influenced by others?
Actually, no. Uh, somewhat, it depends. Influence far as positive, yes. I am easily influenced with that, um, I love constructive criticism. And, uh, as far as that, nothing negative, so yeah.
How did you hear about this position?
Well, actually, uh, a few of your officers, I've had liberty to work alongside them for the past six years. Some used to work for my department with aviation, and they are employed here now. Some of them are full-time officers and part-time. So I heard about it through them.
What is your most important accomplishment that you want us to know about you?
Well, uh, the most important accomplishment is being a law enforcement officer. It's something that I always wanted to do. I worked hard to get here, and, uh, I want to retire out that way.
What do you consider your, your weakness?
Well, sometimes maybe just doubting myself a little bit. Need to put a little bit more effort in pushing myself just a little bit further sometimes, 'cause I know I have potential to do anything.
Wonderful, as we all do.
Any other comments?
Thank you so much.
What's your education from your background?
Some college, but I am in the process of going back now. Because I am a single mother of three boys. And, um, through all these years in my process, I never gave up on myself, but I did encourage their careers and their futures before mine. So I have one that's in college now.
Oh, wow.
And, yeah.
Where do you live?
Where are you going?
Uh, in Morgan Park.
Is that it? All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I'd like to make a motion to approve on the hiring of Christina, Christina?
Christiana.
Christina Reno as a part-time police officer. She has successfully completed and passed the testing, just the polygraph, the medical, the drug test, psychological, and the background.
Yes, trustee Greer is making a motion before the board to pass Ms. Christina Reno for hiring as a part-time police officer. We need a second, please.
Second.
He's second by trustee Garcia. Will it quick take a roll, please?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Our congratulations. Are you ready to launch the announcement?
You can raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear-
Me?
I do solemnly swear- That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois-
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois-
And that Christina Reno- Will faithfully discharge, discharge the duties- Will faithfully discharge-
Will faithfully discharge-
The duties of part, of part-time police officer-
Of part-time police officer-
Of the village of Burnham-
Of the village of Burnham-
And the county of Cook-
And the county of Cook-
And the state of Illinois-
And the state of Illinois-
To the best of my ability-
To the best of my ability.
Discussion of, consideration of, and taking action to approve or not approve on the hiring of Raymond Navarro as a full-time police officer. He has successfully completed and passed the testing, just the polygraph, the medical, drug test, psychological, and the background. Would not begin to work, would not begin to work until the sessions begin at the police academy.
Mr. can you stand, please?
Tell us a little bit about you. Hi, everyone, how you doing? I just wanna thank you guys for giving me this opportunity, um, to prove myself as a police officer. My name is Raymond Navarro. I'm twenty-two years old. And I know that I can bring, you know, youth and energy to the department. I'm very teachable, so I'm very excited to learn, you know, the ways to be a police officer. Again, I don't have much experience, but I'm very excited to build a career and, uh, you know, make a positive impact in the community for you guys.
About the crew of the board, you've come up with me here for twenty-five years, at least, right?
I'm old.
Yes, um, are you easily influenced by others?
Like, uh, like Christina said, I'm very, very well at taking criticism. Like I said, I am teachable. I don't, I know the difference between right and wrong. So positive influence, yes, negative, yes, no.
What do you know about Burnham?
I don't know too much about Burnham. I do know that a lot of the people in the community are great people. I've been told that by many people. So I'm not, not to worry about that. But, yeah, other than that, I don't know too much. But, again, I'm willing to learn.
And Raymond, you are absolutely right. We do have some wonderful people in this community.
So, Mr. Navarro, you said you don't have very much experience in law enforcement. What experience do you have? I mean, how long, have you worked in the industry at all?
Um, I have worked, um, one security job in my life. But I've grown up around corrections officers and police officers. So, um, I do have, you know, their positive influence on me. And the knowledge they can give me. But, again, you know, I'm, I'm young, so I'm excited to run.
In college?
Um, I have very little bit of capital.
So, uh, one last question. So why do you wanna work in a law enforcement field?
I love protecting people and I love helping people. And I know you can make a very positive impact in the field. So, as I said, I'm just excited to, you know, influence people in a positive way, rather than, you know, do something, work a normal nine-to-five job and just make money.
I'd like to make a motion on the approval of the hiring of Mr. Raymond Navarro-
Navarro.
Navarro as a full-time police officer. He has successfully completed and passed the testing, just the polygraph, the medical, the drug test, psychological, and the background. Would not begin to work until the session begins at the police academy.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Greer, if you may, a motion, please.
I made a motion.
Then we need a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Richardson. Will it quick take a roll?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yeah, thank you. Motion passed.
Raise your right hand, in the afternoon. I do solemnly swear-
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois-
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I-
And that I-
Will faithfully discharge the duties-
Will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of full-time police officers-
Of full-time police officers.
Of the village of Burnham-
Of the village of Burnham.
And the county of Cook-
And the county of Cook.
The state of Illinois-
State of Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discussion of, consideration of, and taking action to approve or not approve on the following applicants of the Burnham Volunteer Fire Department. Darren West Junior, Donovan Stark, George A. Bush, Anthony Robert Vargas. Applicants will be required to submit a health screening prior to the beginning of June.
Well, if we want to you, if you would just stand up where you are, you don't have to come up and just, um, you'll come up. Yes, Wes?
Yes, Darren West, Mr. Darren West Junior. Hi.
Uh, how you doing, everybody?
Hi.
I'm Darren West Junior, twenty-eight, uh, from this area around the corner of Kuyma City. Graduated TF North back in eight. Went on to Milligan University, got a sports managing degree. Started my career service, uh, at the Fire Department of Milligan, Illinois. Was there for a year, went to the Fire Academy, maybe still the fourth. Now I'm here, hoping that I can jumpstart my career and, um, manage some experience and get to a full-time department.
Donovan Stark?
Good afternoon, everyone. How are you?
Good afternoon.
Um, Donovan Stark, I'm twenty years old. Just, uh, completed the EMT program at Evergreen Park. I did two years in college in nursing program, one at U of, uh, and one at Southern University in Marburg, Louisiana. My intention goes to become firefighter paramedic. And, uh, Burnham has given me that opportunity, so I just wanna say thank you.
George A. Bush, Mr. George A. Bush.
How's it going, everybody? I'm Georgia Bush Junior. Basically, I'm nineteen years old, uh, I just graduated high school not too long, cause it's summer. And, uh, I was looking for a job that, uh, can suit my goals and, uh, hands-on, like, uh, in the community, sort of say. Uh, I just wanna show my younger nieces and nephews that, uh, you can do something positive in the community. I live in Kuyma City, uh, not too private, you know, three, four minutes away. Uh, all my trainers do is cheaper work, and, uh, he's doing everything he's telling me to do and looking up, uh, stuff on my own time. And sometimes I just watch videos, uh, just become, just look at them, just, it's, just something I feel like I want to do. And you have pretty much have hard work here and just continue to work hard and then it's time for me to do something else. I'll do that.
Um, Mr. Anthony Robert Vargas.
Hi, how you doing?
Hi there.
Hello. My name's Anthony. Um, I, uh, I, I chose, chose to follow this path with Burnham Fire Department because I've had some firefighters in my family, as well as, um, a firefighter that currently works for Burnham that was influential to me upon meeting him. Um, so I've had, I've had some experience with, um, um, an accident, actually, that, that I witnessed about a year ago. It had a really big impact on me, and I was able to assist in that accident. And that, that's what, um, drove me to follow this as a career. You know, I, I really care about helping people and, and the difference that I can make and the, um, inspiration and, and, uh, influence that a firefighter has on his community, and that's what I wanna be a part of.
Yeah. I have one question, any one of you, I can answer it. What is the advantage of working as a team?
As a team?
As a team.
Uh, well, I feel like you just have years to improve, you know? That's just how, like, you know, if you start young, you can get better by the time you get older. And I realize that, and, yeah, that's what I wanna do, too.
This is a question for any one of you. Would you ever disobey an order?
Careful. I, I would say that you, maybe in a situation that you might need to disobey an order, um, if, if you are in, um, a safety issue that maybe your superior does not understand or does not see firsthand. But on, on a normal basis, it is important to obey, um, orders because the, the superior is the one who has experience and who's looking out for the entire team, and he may be able to see what you can't.
Okay, that's correct.
Very good.
And so, do you, I feel that teamwork is very important.
Yes, that's it.
Do you feel there's success in the word "I"?
No.
No, completely. Okay, and the last question. What do you know about Burnham? Any, anybody?
Well, I've been around Kuyma City and the Burnham area for maybe twenty years, twenty-plus years, if you have a minute down here. As it, there was a joke when I was younger that they, it's like this little Kuyma City. Uh, I had a little, a lot of friends, I lived in the area, I played ball over here. I actually ran in that shit a little bit, like, maybe a couple times when I was younger, probably I remember it, but, yeah. I've never seen any too much turmoil going on over here, it's always been a kind of neighborhood. That's what I, that's what I wanna know.
Okay.
And I'm sure whoever you met-
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you.
I'm sure whoever you met, the time that you and I met, I'm sure they told you that I'm the best male in the Southland.
All right, there.
Mr. Bush, before we proceed, um, um, might you consider running for president since then, your family?
Maybe, I don't know. I won't rule anything out.
All right, thank you for seeing, Chris.
I'd like to make a motion to approve on the following applicants to the Burnham Fire Department. Mr. Darren West Junior, Donovan Stark, Mr. George A. Bush, Mr. Anthony Robert Vargas. Applicants will be required to submit a health screening prior to the beginning of June.
Okay, trustee Greer has made a motion to approve these appointments for the fire department. We need a second, please.
Second.
He's second by trustee Claybrook. Will it quick take a roll?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed. Congratulations.
Burnham Fire Department report, this is for the month of November twenty-eighteen. There were, for the fire, there were fifteen calls. There were six during the day and eight during the night. Amalac calls, twenty-nine total, very busy. There were seventeen during the day and twelve during the night. I would just like to remind everyone, if you have a disabled person living in your home or if you have a person that is using an oxygen tank, tank, I'm sorry, please fill out a residential emergency medical information sheet. If you need one, I do have copies in, in the office. It's very important, in case there was an emergency in the home. It would be, uh, very helpful to the emergency responders to have this information. Again, if you need to fill one out, we have them available for you. Just a reminder that the senior line dancing is still going on every Saturday from nine A.M. to seven A.M. It's a form of, uh, fitness workout. It's a lot of fun. The last session will be December the twenty-ninth, and our next session will begin January the twelfth, twenty-nineteen. We have great instructors, lots of fun. January the twenty-first, a Martin Luther King Junior celebration is going to be at South Florida College at the Performance Arts Center. The doors open at nine o'clock and the program begins at ten A.M. It's free admission and refreshments. The, um, keynote speaker will be Dr. Reverend Ozzy E. Smith. He's coming, he's from South Hollywood. He's a fantastic speaker and a great musician also. Uh, there's gonna be a special performance by Gwendolyn Brooks Little School Jazz Band. Again, that's January the twenty-first. And last but not least, we know that during this time of year, it's so many things unexpected, and, uh, we could have a slow storm or a light's involved at any time. So I just want to remind everyone, it's better to be safe than sorry. A lot of times, the lights go out for a period of time. What do we do? Get a candle. And so I just want to remind everyone, when you're doing shopping, and just wanna remind, there are so many things on the market. Instead of using candles, we have these, and you can just pick these up anywhere. It's bright, they last for hours. It only uses, uh, a D-batteries. So I have loads of D-batteries, and anytime my lights go out, I have several of these. And during this holiday time, you can find all kinds of, um, items like this. So these are very ba, uh, you know, safe to get. Also, flashlights. I have plenty, keep plenty of flashlights in your home. They're great for light, make great lighting, and, uh, keep loads of batteries, so you never be without light if your lights go off. Also, I know you've seen these before. These are the closet. You can pick these up almost just anywhere, and they take double-A batteries. Just push this and you can just put these up anywhere. It has a little hook on the back, you can just hang them there. And of course, these lanterns, they give out a lot of light. It takes a, a heavy-duty battery. But all of these are very safe. It's better to use these than to use candles. So while you're out in the market shopping- So while you're out in the market shopping, pick up some of these if you're going along because they're everywhere. Have a great holiday.
Thank you, Trusty Greer, for that, for that application, and, uh, safety is certainly something that we all value very significantly. And we certainly want our family, the children, and everybody to be safe in the community. Thanks again, public works, you build it. Trusty Clayber?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just like, uh, Mayor Pope noted, um, earlier, um, this morning, we attended the, um, South Suburban Mayor's and Managers Association on, uh, on a resolution or a policy called, uh, Complete Streets Policy. And, you know, it's a very beneficial policy, it, it covers, uh, it, it, first of all, it helps get funding through, through different programs and grants, and it strengthens our ability to, uh, to actually submit, uh, application or what have you if we have this policy intact. And, um, it should be up for review the first of the year, and, um, voted on by the board. And another thing, it, it, it shows the different, uh, the different byways of, of the most important, um, streets for, in the village, like Torrance, Burnham Avenue, what have you. And, um, they take priority over the other streets, not to say the other streets wouldn't get done or, or serviced, but, uh, the, um, I-DOT would go, they would be first on the list. And, um, it, it also, it was a very interesting class, I did learn a lot. And, um, it, it shows that, in, in this policy, if someone, let's just say someone moves in a house, in, right here, and, um, Trusty Richardson is right here, and her house doesn't have a sidewalk, and when Chief is sitting, his house doesn't have a sidewalk. It's, in this policy, it would say that in order for them, us to move in as a business, we would put a sidewalk there and also on each side. So it, it's very beneficial, and, um, that's all.
Thank you, uh, Trusty Clayber for that information and your report. The ordinance resolution and plan, and Trusty Garcia?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Discussion of, consideration of, and taking action to pass or not pass ordinance number twenty-eighteen zero-zero-one-one and ordnance to having taxes for the fiscal year beginning May first, twenty-eighteen, and then, and ending April thirty, twenty-nineteen of the Village of Burnham.
So you make a motion that you have, are there any questions from the board? May I have a question?
Order is twenty-eighteen zero-zero-one-one, and ordnance to having taxes for the fiscal year beginning May first, twenty-eighteen, and ending April thirty, twenty-nineteen of the Village of Burnham.
So the motion will go by Trusty Garcia, and the second by Trusty Cap for approve the letter.
Discussion, why, why is the appropriations included with this ordinance? The appropriations included with this ordinance?
Well, I think it's on there, maybe close to the payment, and they show you the reflection.
Okay, this, this ordnance, the appropriations that we have not discussed yet should not be included in the ordinance that we are approving. The appropriations are already attached. This is the existing, so this is not for the twenty-eighteen, twenty, twenty, nineteen, twenty, twenty year?
Since April thirty, twenty nineteen. This is only up to twenty nineteen.
And then that's the full year.
When Anthony, by the third, when I read the next part, it'll make more sense.
Okay, as long as, okay.
So I have the second part of this, and maybe the most important part. I move that the corporate authorities of the Village of Burnham, Burnham estimate the village's aggregate, aggregate levy for two thousand eighteen for the purpose of compliance with truth and taxation law as being three million, one hundred thousand dollars. So that's the total of this.
Any questions in the board?
And this is for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty? To end in twenty nineteen?
Isn't the imagination, don't they talk a lot of?
But actually, by the third, it's, yeah. What would you guys talk about?
Trusty Cap? Trusty Cap?
Yes.
Trusty Bonner?
Yes.
Trusty Garcia?
Yes.
Trusty Greer?
Yes.
Trusty Richardson?
Yes.
Trusty Clayber?
Yes.
Motion passed, is anything else present? Final answer, Trusty Cap?
I have nothing else.
Thank you, Trusty Richardson?
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have a school project now on, on a hundred and forty-first and a hundred and forty-second, and Saginaw is still under construction, and I'll have an update in January at the first board meeting. Also, one day next year, we're going to have an electronic waste pickup date. That date will be announced later as well. And Cedar will be out at the Community Center on December nineteenth, from ten AM to three PM. We're still taking, uh, appointments, so you can call the village hall and schedule an appointment. That's it for me.
Uh, thank you, and Trusty Richardson. And then the fourth part of recreation, Trusty Bonner?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Uh, this Saturday, uh, December fifteenth, we have a breakfast with Santa. All ages are welcome, tickets are still available. Uh, that's from ten AM to twelve PM, and I think it'd be a lot of fun for the little ones. And that's it for my report. Oh, and thank you for the donations people have been sponsoring. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, uh, Trusty Bonner for that report.
You want to bring that up?
No.
Christmas lighting, tree lighting, or no?
You can bring it right, on your behalf.
What?
It was the Kell City Park District, Christmas tree lighting was Friday night.
Yes, I saw pictures, it was very nice.
Okay, thank you.
We were there, the mayor, Moose and I, I think those are the Christmas decorations.
Yeah, this is, um, and this is a presentation, this is out of Chaplin, Reverend, a barrage from the Village of Burnham. And the Chaplin position, uh, is a volunteer position, and, um, of course, we don't pay him anything for the service. By embracing God, we don't really need to service, and a whole lot of messages for natural calls or something, so. But, so we certainly appreciate that, so, uh, I just think that it is fitting and proper that we would offer him a token of our gratitude and appreciation, Reverend. And, uh, and this is a gift of selective personal from you, and thank you very much. Is there any communication, I'm worried. I would ask for a moment of silence from, um, the lady from the cleanup, Ms. Ainge, after her husband passed on Thanksgiving Day. And, um, so she's going through a process, and we're not sure when she's going to be able to stay here in the middle and keep the cleanup going, so. I think that's all for your prayer, that's all. All right, thank you, and we have no rest, must we see? Is there any unfinished business?
Yes, we, uh, last meeting, we discussed the, uh, the building that had, uh, the, the crash to it over here on, uh, Goodrich.
Okay.
Yes, um, it's still boarded up. Have you heard any word of when they're going to fix that? It's been over a month now, and, and it's still boarded up.
Well, you know, um, we have to follow that up, I don't know exactly what is going on, but I have not spoken to the building commissioner, but we'll follow that up.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, new business, would you take that, Trusty Clayber?
Reminder, there will not be a regular scheduled board meeting according to our schedule. Discussion of, consideration of, and taking action to, to adopt on the schedule of two thousand nineteen, regular board meetings of the President and Board of Trustees of the Village of Burnham. I make a motion, I make a motion to adopt on the schedule of two nine, two, two thousand nineteen, regular board meeting of the President and Board of Trustees of the Village of Burnham.
You should have made a comment that we're canceling the next meeting because it's on Christmas. We have the following Christmas, so we're going to cancel that next meeting.
Uh, December twenty, Bill.
But the following year, we have one scheduled on Christmas Eve, so we're going to have to change that one, too, or cancel that one.
Well, protocol for a month of December, we can only have one meeting, but the second meeting is always near close to Christmas, so.
Trusty Cap?
Yes.
Trusty Bonner?
Yes.
Trusty Garcia?
Yes.
Trusty Greer?
Yes.
Trusty Richardson?
Yes.
Trusty Clayber?
All right, thank you, meet adjourned, thank you.